Good evening. It's March 20th, and this is a joint meeting of the Union County Board of Education and the Union County Board of County Commissioners. For the Board of Education, I call it to order. All members are here, and I need approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Nine oh. Okay.
All right. I called to order this Wednesday, March 20, 2024, a joint meeting between Union County Board of Education with the Union County Board of County Commissioners. I look for approval of the agenda. All in favor? Aye. Thank.
There's opening comments. Do you want to do that? Want me to do? Okay, I can do it. Good evening. We're glad to hear you there, here. We have, we are lucky to have commissioners who value these joint meetings as it is important to our citizens and taxpayers to see our boards working together. We believe that the number one reason people move to Union County is for the great school district. We work hard to keep it that way. However, we are 113 out of 115 school districts in total student expenditures. We are currently 30th for county appropriations and supplemental taxes. Unfortunately, we are ranked 50th for local teacher supplements as we still compete with CMS and South Carolina districts for teachers. The competition is greater now because every North Carolinas' school district and the nation have teacher backs back in seats. We are looking forward to get a great, we are looking forward to have a great meeting discussing our budget outlook and the county's budget process preview.
Of course, it's always good to get together with the Board of Education. We value education on the Board of County Commissioners. I think I can speak for all the members of the county commission. We always look forward to getting together with y'all. We appreciate the job you do, and we're looking forward to a very informative meeting. Thank.
Good evening. Can y'all hear me okay from here? Okay. My name is somewhat low. Is that better? Okay, here we go. Sorry. Good evening, Commissioners and members of the Board of Education. My name is Clayton Voynier. I'm the Assistant County Manager for Union County, and I'm going to talk a little bit about the county budget preview and go over our process. I'm going to start with kind of the bifurcated tax rate, just to level set everything. I'm going to talk about ad valorem and sales tax revenue projections and what those implications are. And then Beverly Lyles, our Finance Director, is going to talk a little bit about fund balance. And then I'll go over some, just some key dates in our budget process. I'm told that this works from here, and it does. So this is our current bifurcated tax rate. This is the adopted tax rate. You can see the Union County General Fund is 16.32 cents, Union County Debt Fund 1.75, and UCS and SBCC make up the education funds. We split those out internally, and I've showed that here. What actually gets adopted is that for the Education Operating Fund, the 37.42. So you can see UCS's portion of that is 36.45. And for the Education Debt Fund, we adopted a rate of 2.92, and UCS's portion is 1.94. And then we have our Economic Development Fund at .39, and that makes up our 58.8 cent tax rate. Moving on to ad valorem revenue projections, a growing population should, you know, should equate to growth in the tax base, and that's what we've historically seen here in Union County to the tune of between 2.9 and 4.5%. So looking over sort of the average growth over the last few years, we think a conservative starting point for our growth rate is around 3.25%, and that equals about $4 million in terms of a penny value. This is a conservative estimate, and we typically do that this time each year, provide that conservative estimate. I think last year, we started out at around 3.25 or 3.5. We ended up in May recommending 4.5%, and that was ultimately adopted. We think we may be on a similar trajectory for that this year, but we need to evaluate sort of our assessed value. We need to look at our collections, over the actual collections over the last year, and we need to evaluate that. And hopefully, in the next couple months, we'll be meeting with the school administration to communicate if there's any changes to that. But for now, that's what the starting point is for our growth. And that equates to an actual increase in the UCS operating budget of about $4.6 million. Sales tax is a little bit more complicated. So these are mid-year projections for sales tax. Just to orient you to the charts, on the left is the fiscal year. You've got your adopted budget, that we adopted for sales tax, revised budget, then what we actually collected, and then what our over or under budget amount was, and a percent of budget collected. And then finally, the annual increase year-over-year in the actual collection rate. There's a couple of things I want to point out about this, about this chart. First of all, you can see kind of the first two years, we were actually under budget, but we were still at about 6% of growth. As we moved into the pandemic, people had disposable income, they were at home, historically low interest rates, they were spending more. And so we saw astronomical growth rates of about 15 and 18% growth. We kind of expected that to continue to happen through FY '24, and then in FY '25, it would kind of stabilize between 3.5 to 6%. Unfortunately, that just happened faster than we thought it would. So our projections go through about March of each year. We still have one more collection period this year to look at. And when we get the final reports, the last three months of the fiscal year in July and August, when we got those reports, I mean, it went down very quickly. We were just not anticipating that. And so that ultimately affected where we ended up in FY '23, but we were still over budget in terms of collections. For FY '24, that's a different story. So we're actually about, that 12.5% is actually not the year-over-year increase. That's how much below budget we are. So we're about $10.1 billion below budget for FY '24. We've gotten a fifth collection period in, and so we think that we're actually going to collect about $70.9 million this year. But again, with that, you know, that's just kind of where we are. And that affects our starting point for next year as well. So again, I sort of mentioned this, but what are the implications of that? Obviously, sales tax growth is more difficult to project coming out of the pandemic. It stabilized much faster than we expected. And so we are using our projection for this year as our starting point for next year. So again, that's at 70.9 million, and we're, that's 12.5% under our budget for FY '24. So the sales taxes split out 70, about 70-30%, 70 to General Fund, 30 to Education Debt Fund. And so what that means in actual dollar amounts is we're looking at a General Fund reduction of about $7.4 million for FY '25, and about $2.7 million for Education Debt Fund. In real terms, what does that mean? Well, fortunately, last year, we put in $10 million of our pensionable funds in the Education Debt Fund, as well as $9 million in bond premiums. And so that was supposed to offset any future tax rate increases for new debt. But if we, if we did not take on any new debt at this point, if that fund didn't take on any new debt, there would not be a significant impact from this reduction to the fund balance and virtually no impact to the tax rate. So that's again, if there's no new debt taken on. And next, we'll talk about fund balance. I'm going to actually turn it over to Beverly Lyles to walk through this.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So we just wanted to take a quick minute tonight to just have a quick fund balance discussion. This is the first fiscal year since we've had our bifurcated tax rate, which is new for many of the new Board of Education members, as well as our commissioners. None of them were here in the past when we had previously had the bifurcated tax rate. And what we want to talk about is what you can expect from a timeline perspective of fund balance calculations and what that means. So fund balance is created by savings either from not spending all of your expenditures or over collecting your revenues. So revenues over or under expenditures compared to your actual budget determine if you have any additions or reductions to your revenue, excuse me, to your fund balance from the prior year. So our fiscal year ends June 30th, just like yours does. And in those summer months, we were actually working on our audit, just like you are, to create our financial statements. During that timeframe, we worked to do our fund balance calculation as required by GAZBI and GAAP, and that financial statement report for us is due to the State Treasurer's Office during October. It's due on October 31st. So we know what those calculations are. However, we have to wait for the State Treasurer's Office to give us their blessing on our audit that we receive their approval. That takes several weeks, as you can imagine, their review in all 100 counties and all municipalities in the state. So in the November-December timeframe, we wait for that approval. Following that, normally, the last meeting in November, early December, we actually present our financial statements to our board, and at that time, we also present our fund balance calculations. During that time, we go over each fund balance category and what that means. And probably, the most fund balance category that you all are familiar with is our unassigned fund balance, because that's what's really available for you all to spend on one-time items or to pay down debt service, which is guided by our fund balance policy. So there's always been the question in the past of, you referred to it as your true-up money, when can we receive that? We just wanted to give a timeline of when that expectation would be. So in the January timeframe or during your annual budget process for next year, that's when we would actually go over what is available for your fund balance that you could request for use now that we have the bifurcated funds. This is the first year with the new bifurcated tax rate, and part of the actual education operating budget is also for South Piedmont. So there will be a split of that unassigned fund balance, a portion for Union County Public Schools and a portion for South Piedmont. Now, the majority, of course, would be for Union County Public Schools because you carry a higher percentage of that tax rate for that fund. We just wanted to go over that and make sure there were no questions about how that process works, when you could expect to know what that calculation would be. And if you have any questions about that, I'll be glad to answer those.
Thank you.
So just to wrap up on kind of key upcoming dates, the Boards, our Board of Commissioners' regular meeting on April 15th, we're actually going to have, we think, again, better projections based on collections and estimates of assessed value. We'll provide that information in our FY '24 third quarter update. We'll also be submitting the county's FY '25 capital budget requests. And in talking with the schools, I think we've heard that they're also going to present their long-term capital request at that meeting. Statutorily, UCS has to submit their budget request by May 15th to the Board of Commissioners. That's a statutory date. Our plan is to submit the managers, the manager to submit his recommended budget to the clerk by May 24th. And June 3rd is, at that regular meeting, there'll be a presentation and public hearing on the manager's recommended budget. And if everything goes smoothly, the budget will be adopted on June 17th at the next regular board meeting. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Beverly is happy to answer any questions. Blake Hart, our Budget Director, is also here if you have any more questions.
Send us by email.
Yes, yes.
Presentation. So you can send it to me, and I'll give it to everybody else.
Sure.
That would be great. Thank you.
I have a question. Do you have any budget workshops scheduled as of today?
So that April 15th is actually our budget workshop for those items, those, that third quarter revenue projections and our capital budget request. We're just simply doing that at a regular meeting.
Right. And we will have some additional meetings as well with the Board. That's just one meeting that we'll have with the Board as far as budgets. They're just not shown yet at this point in time. We try to do them as much as possible during regular meetings if we can, knowing the schedules of Board members and trying to get that. But if we do have to have special meetings, we'll certainly put those and post those. I did want to just say a few things. Number one, I want to talk about Drew and his staff and the relationship we have. I think we have a good working relationship. We meet regularly. We talk about, you know, some of the, you know, some of the needs that the school has, what we're faced with. And as Clayton said earlier, this is a preliminary projection. As the sausage is made, we learn new things. We gain additional information. That may modify some of the additional dollars that we have. We also look at the one-time dollars that we have available and how we can program that. Ultimately, that is the decision of the Board. But I do want everyone to be aware that this is just preliminary. Obviously, there are some, there are some concerns that we'll have to address. Sales tax is a big issue for us, especially with the General Fund. It doesn't affect the schools as much, but it does affect our budget quite significantly this year. So it's not doom and gloom, but I just want to make sure everyone understands those are challenges that we're facing this year.
Could you please let me know, when, when is the fiscal year beginning and end?
It's our fiscal year begins July 1 and ends June 30.
Okay.
Mr. Manager, you said you had some things that shouldn't concern us, but is there a possibility that in that things that shouldn't concern us, something might pop up to concern us?
True. When I say sales tax, because, because we programmed money in the debt fund for schools out of our ARPA funds, that should not have an impact on the school debt fund. Obviously, how we work through the budget process is a different story. Now, there is a tax rate established, but it's only going to generate just so much revenue. That's where we have to kind of make some decisions.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. It's those little things that I hear like that that is, they're just kind of hanging out there.
Yep.
All right. So we'll, we'll get going. I also want to echo and build upon what Brian said, so that the county knows that we greatly appreciate the relationship between staff to staff. I do feel like we're at an all-time high in that regard. We talk almost daily, if not multiple times a day, to really make sure we're aligned on priorities and the support that's needed to run the school system. So Brian, to you and your team, I appreciate your support as well, and you guys have a great team. Tonight, we're going to hear from our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Shawna McLamb. She's going to give everyone kind of an update on our current operational budget, what we know, what we don't know, impact of state mandates, and then local priorities. And then she's also going to talk a little bit about our capital improvement plan that has been approved by our Board at our most recent meeting. Mr. Colin Moore, who oversees operations, is going to give a high-level bond update, just so that you can see the progress that we're making on those two projects. And then I'll close my piece with discussion, and really around the federal COVID relief funds and some areas that we're trying to sustain as we move the district forward. So, Ms. McLamb, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? I'm loud. Sometimes I can't tell. So one of the things I do want to point out, you all have a packet that has the presentation as well as supplemental information at the very end, a lot of the statistical data, enrollment information that we share with you every year, some of our vacancy information, as well as a slight update to our ESER priorities. So all of that is in your handout. So as we start talking about this year, when we talk about the state budget, the state is, we are in our second year of a biennial budget. So there are some norms that we do have. State legislated increases for non-certified staff is at 3%, and teachers are going to be an average of 4%. As you all will recall, those averages are scaled across the steps on the state salary schedule, but the local non-certified schedule is a 3% flat increase. We are anticipating an increase. I was on a call yesterday with our state DPI, Department of Public Instruction. We are expecting an increase to our hospital insurance, that matching insurance for every full-time employee we have to account for and allocate in our local budget. The retirement rate, they are projecting to decrease slightly, which would be the first time that I recall ever. So I will hold on that. We are having a transition with our State Treasurer and some other things that I feel, you know, may be, remain to be seen. But as we look right now, they are anticipating a decrease to our matching retirement benefit. So some of the general things that we've looked at in this year's budget process are the ESER sustainability. We've had several items that we have shared with you all several times. We talked about it a lot last year, that we are trying to continue with academic supports and student supports that we feel are very high priorities for the district. The impact, as we always do, of our state mandates and how that, how that rolls into our local funding. And then we're always looking to improve academic, our academic success and being able to maintain that. As we look at any increases to our local funding, we will also have to allocate a proportionate share of those increases to our charter school students. As I have shared with you all in the past, just for perspective, the funding increases at a higher percentage in total than the per pupil increase does when you break it all down. So I always like to share that data. A lot of that statistical information, again, is in your packets for your review. So this year, we're sharing a few of our rankings plus some of the supplement increase information from prior years. As you'll recall, our teacher supplements, we did an increase for them in 2022. At that time, that was intended to bring us up to 19. Since that time, the state has allocated some local supplements to counties across the state. We do receive a portion of those dollars this year. Our portion will be $936. Some other districts receive upward, the maximum of $5,000. That state supplement support has shifted our ranking much further down the list, as you can see. So as we rank right now, we're at number 50th statewide. Our assistant principals and principals are also listed on this chart, are on this slide. The last local increase that we were able to afford to provide to them on their local supplements was in 2015. Our per pupil ranking, which the per pupil appropriation is at 30, and our total per pupil expenditures is still lower than, we're, you know, have 115 districts, and we rank at 113. And that's all funding sources combined. So we look to partner and work with the county commission to help us support those, any increases in those charter school enrollments and the inflationary factors that I think we're all facing. Things are costing more. We're also looking at our state legislated increases as well as, if you all will recall, we're in year three of our middle school athletic program, bringing all of middle school athletics into the school system. Some of the other, you know, prior year compensation items that we requested, plus some targeted student support items, will also be things that we are looking to address in this budget cycle. I do give you all a chart each year. The state has not provided any enrollment projections at this time. So you will see the actual 40th-day enrollment plus for us, as well as the charter school numbers that we are currently paying. I'm projecting internally some increases to both of those numbers, but at this time, I don't have anything from the state that I can share. So our capital overview. So our capital, operating capital process is to identify those operating facility needs to maintain our buildings, address any infrastructure or technology. You all have been very great to support us with our laptop leases and other technology needs that we've had across the years, plus any fleet maintenance or repair, not repairs, but replacements to our fleet. So this year, just the operating capital for facilities has been approved at this point. The Facilities Committee approved the needs district-wide as identified by the Facilities Department. We wanted to share those, those full needs with the county commission at this meeting, just so you can see where we're at currently. We are working on continuing to ensure that we're spending our funds annually, trying to make sure that we do not have a lot of outstanding dollars in cash. So we continue to work on that. This is a graph that we've shared in the past. Just wanted to bring it back to your attention of the square footage, the number of acres, brick-and-mortar buildings that we maintain, and the age of those buildings. So those needs continue to increase, the cost, again, the inflationary items that we've discussed previously, that has an impact on what that dollar amount is that we're going to need to continue to maintain these aging facilities. Ooh, went a little too fast. And we're at the bond update. So before we move to the bond update, I know I kind of went through that. I just asked for any questions, anything that, that, we good for right now? All right. I'll let Colin, oh, I'm sorry.
Shawna, real quick question. Going to the pie chart here, the district facility data, the, so the light blue, the 2% is auxiliary. The colors seem a little similar to me. So the 2% would be auxiliary, and then the 34% is high schools, correct? I just want to make sure I'm interpreting the data correctly.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Thought yours.
Good evening. You may recall, in November of 2022, the voters of Union County passed a bond that allowed us to do replacements of two schools in Union County Public Schools. That was Forest Hills High School and East Elementary School. So my purpose tonight is just to give you an update on where we are from the time we met with you last year to kind of tell you where we are with those two projects. So the first one I'll talk about is Forest Hills High School. That project was bid in, in March of last year, so about a year ago. We received Board of Education approval in May, along with a notice to proceed to the contractor, and the building moving is anticipated for June of 2025. We should wrap everything up in time for the '25-'26 school year. That's our anticipation for our seals. You've got some notes there about some things going on with a, with a facility that's this large. There are a lot of things going on differently. You've got footing starting in one place, and you've got masonry walls and sheet rock walls going on another. But those kind of little bullet points on where we are with the Forest Hills High School project. This is a rendering. You can see, I don't know if it's good, but you can see over on the, on the upper right side of the photo, of this rendering, that's the existing Forest Hills High School football stadium. So you can get a perspective of where this building is going. But this will be the front entrance to the new high school. And just a couple, we've got a couple of progress photos for you to look at. These were taken last week, so they're fairly, fairly recent photos. On the East Elementary School project, this project bid in April of last year. Bids came in the first week in May. We received Board of Education approval on June 6, gave a notice to proceed to the contractor on June 7. We anticipate being able to move into this building in December of 2024. We will need, after that, demo the existing building. That's going to take about six months to get it demoed and get everything put back in place for parking lots and playfields. And then we anticipated a project completion in August of 2025 as well, in time for the '25-'26 school year. Again, bullet points to kind of tell you the progress of where we are right now on the construction. This is a rendering of the new East Elementary. Just as a point of reference, the existing school would be located in the bottom right photo, bottom right corner of this, of this rendering. And these are as well some progress photos. Both projects are progressing on schedule. We had a really dry fall and a somewhat of a dry beginning of the winter. We've had a lot of rain the last couple months, but we were far enough ahead of schedule that both projects continue to be on schedule. And to date, we haven't, we have received no change orders to the contract that we had, that required Board of Education approval. We had allowances and contingencies built into the contract to cover anything that we, the things that we anticipated, and so far, we have not exceeded those. Be glad to answer any questions about those projects.
So when it comes to the, the
So when it comes to the COVID relief dollars that UCS was allocated, back when the pandemic hit, the school system was allocated $90 million. We have made some very strategic decisions with Board of Education support to spend those dollars, what we believe to be very wisely, on strategies and initiatives to really help our children recover from the pandemic. And I would just say, as I always like to be on record, we are very proud of the academic success of the school system. Through the pandemic, our doors were open. We led the state of North Carolina when it came to academic proficiency and growth, and we still do. And as a large district, we take a lot of pride in that. These funds have definitely helped us. Unfortunately, they are all being sunset effective in September. And every single school district across the nation is facing what we call the federal funding cliff. So we took that $90 million with the understanding that there is no way we can sustain all of that. However, what are the key initiatives or strategies that we believe in an ideal world, if we could sustain them, we could, we would? And the very last page of your packet has a one-page handout of the listing of what those priorities are, which is about 10% of what that ESER fund budget was. And I want to speak to three of those this evening that have really become, three or four, I'm sorry, that have become really instrumental in how we operate schools in Union County. The first one around academic supports is what we call our daily intensive tutoring program. This was an initiative we started before the pandemic. When the pandemic hit, we took it to scale in many of our schools, and we are facing a situation where if we don't sustain that effort, we have many tutors across our school system that will no longer have that as an employed job. They are providing a tremendous amount of service to our schools and our children. Last week, I sent our Board of Education and the Board of County Commissioners an evaluation that has been conducted by the University of Chapel Hill that really speaks to the fact that we are getting a return on investment when it comes to this initiative. That is one that we really would like to try to sustain, but that is going to require state or local funding in order to do that. The second one is what we call our multilingual learner supports. We are seeing a tremendous increase in the number of children that are moving here from out of the country. And this is, these are not just children from Costa Rica, Honduras, et cetera. We're seeing a big influx of individuals from Ukraine, from Russia, particularly around our Porter Ridge, Indian Trail, Sun Valley areas. We have spent ESER funds on translators, on interpreters, on ESL teachers to really help our newcomers really get caught up on academic English and the way that we do school in America. The third item that I would mention is our support that we've been able to provide for our exceptional children's department. We are seeing an increase in the number of children that are qualifying for 504s, IEPs. That's a significant amount of funding that we really would like to sustain. And then the last one is really around student supports, and it's one that I believe all of us share as important, and that is a nurse in every school. I don't think that we, that the pandemic caused us to realize that. I think we've realized that from before the pandemic, but the pandemic certainly did confirm that belief. And we have been able to contract 10 nurses out during the last four years for that work, and they do amazing job, just like all of our locally-employed nurses. So those are probably the four biggest priorities that we have moving into this budget cycle. When we present our budget to our board in April, this will be discussed again in further detail. But we did want the Board of County Commissioners to know that when you look at that comprehensive list, these are probably the ones that are having, all of them are having an impact. These four are having top-notch impact on our ability to sustain high performance, so.
So I only included in the presentation just a few of the supplement schedules that, again, are in your packets. And I will draw your attention to, like, I tried to un-highlight, I guess, some of the large districts, just so you can see the large 12 and where some of these are ranked, just, and highlight Union County in yellow on those. So just for your ease of reading those documents. And that's it for our presentation.
Staff and I are happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Dr. Hulain, I've got a question, and this goes back to the Forest Hills High School project and East Elementary. The project timeline that we were shown tonight, where does that compare with the original project timeline that we had looked at previously when the bond was passed? Are we pretty close to the original timeline?
Okay.
Yeah, yes. Our intention all along, we're open both schools in the '25-'26 school year. So that was, that was the commitment we made to the voters when the bond was made available. Excuse me. We've kind of gone back and forth with the East Elementary, because of when we're moving in, depending on when our finish date is, we don't want to, we don't want to transfer the students in the middle of, like, in the middle of, that's not a break, like a winter break or a spring break or something. So we're getting a little bit fluid with that one, but our intentions are to do that over the winter break of next year.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. I don't have any other questions about that, other than to say that that was, that was a very good update. It's very impressive, you know, what we're doing there with Forest Hills and East Elementary, and I'm anxious to see the final products.
If you have not driven around the East Elementary School property or over to Forest Hills, it is quite impressive to see the amount of great work happening. That East project is a very, one of the tightest footprints I've ever seen in terms of construction. So their ability to have school right now while you're building a new building has been quite impressive. So kudos to our team, and again, thank you all for the support on that effort.
We got, we're here for any questions.
Okay. Closing comments?
The, I just want to say to the board and to the manager that when you hear this presentation on tonight, we really want you to hear it in such a way that this is, they've spent a lot of time really cutting and pasting to try to get to a feasible point that when we come to you, it's, we're really saying, we need you. We need you. They have done quite the job of putting this together. So this is, we're not asking for extra gravy here. We're asking for vegetables. So just want you to know that.
So when our budget is completed, I hope we can get together again to talk about our budgets. Yes?
I know, I was going to ask, so. Sorry about that. So I know that statutorily, it's due by May 15th, and I know you guys are working hard, obviously, to turn that in, obviously, as soon as you can. I would anticipate that once we have that budget, we would certainly want to get back together with the school board and have those discussions about your vegetables versus your gravy. I think that's important.
Thank you very much.
I think that's important for us to talk about those things. And it's not lost on us at the staff level and with the board, that I know that there's a lot of, a lot of needs. I also understand that teacher supplements are a big, that's a big issue, because you want to retain and attract good staff. We're dealing with that as well, and with our own employees. And so our board is certainly wrestling with that with our own staff at the county level. I want you guys to know that we also supported your legislative goal for the ESER funds and tutoring. We felt that that was an extremely important component to what you do for education, and it's been very beneficial. So we were very supportive of that with our legislators. Drew was there at our legislative breakfast. They heard us. I'm not sure what they'll do with it, but they did hear us. So hopefully, we'll get some positive out of the General Assembly. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manager.
Not a question, but just a general comment. It seems like we say this every single year about the great job that UCS staff does. But, you know, when you're looking through these numbers, it's very impressive where we rank in regards to the performance of our school system versus the calls per pupil that we have. That's a testament to not only this board, but also the staff members that are there daily, working with the children and students. And so I just want to say thank you to this board and also to all the staff members. You guys do a great job.
Thank you. I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now leave.
Don't clap here. We might want to talk some more.